Okay, we are on the record. It is now six oh four, the June eleventh meeting of the Charter Revision Commission is now in session. We have in attendance Carol Lee, Patricia Billings, Jody Gross, Karen Madour, Jeff McGuire, and Adrian Mandeville is absent. Doesn't look like we have any members of the public present right now. Let me just bring up the agenda to make sure that I don't miss anything here. We have called to order. The second item will be public speak. We have no members of the general public.
Just say something during public speak though.
Yeah, I wanted to say if if there are any members of the commission who want to speak as individuals, now's the time. So Carol, go ahead.
I I would just like to suggest that section one zero zero eight review and amendment of the charter. That we just add a single line to that that states if upon review amendments to the charter are deemed necessary. The Board of Selectmen shall appoint a Charter Revision Commission, giving this commission a minimum of twelve months. Complete their charge. This way, rather than having these charter revisions that are, you know, expected to be done in three to six weeks. It's the law of the town of the end over. I mean, we need more time to honestly review our, you know, get our charge and then review what charge we are given. Do a good job at the Charter Revision.
It's an interesting notion. Open the floor to discussion on this. Anyone have any thoughts?
Yeah, I think time is an interesting thing. And so you know, the real question is, do you want to bite off one or two things in three to four months? Or do you want to try to do multiple things, a lot of things? So I think with a shortened time period. You know, I think we just, you know, as a board without that provision in there, or as a commission, sorry, whatever we are committee. We just need to recognize that we can do what we can do in a short period of time and have that level of discussion. So I'm I'm inclined not to put that type of requirement in, but because it kind of blocks us in to saying you can only do it with twelve months. Because I think I think we're able to get some substantial improvements, changes even in a three to four month period.
I'm not saying that we can't complete it in three months, Jody, but I'm just saying we know that every November there is going to be an election, whether it be municipal, gubernatorial, or presidential. Every November, there will be an election. So we have twelve months notice for that. I'm not saying that the Charter Revision couldn't be assigned in January or in December of one year and completed the end of January, the following year, if there are smaller things to be done, but a couple of the things that we were given are not smaller things to look into. They're major things. They're major changes for our form of government. And you know, if we are, if not only the Charter Revision Commission, but the general public has twelve months notice too, that this Charter Revision is going to take place. And these are the items that the Board of Selectmen are suggesting that we do.
Given that the charge, well, the impanelment and the charge nominally comes from the Board of Selectmen. And we have a select person here on our commission. Jeff, do you have any thoughts on?
Sure, I was on mute. I guess Carol, the only issue I would have is I don't think there's a limitation for the Board of Selectmen to the number of times it's in panels with Charter Committee. Is that accurate?
Correct.
Right, so we're going to limit the Board, future Board of Selectmen's to only allowing or having to impanel a Charter Revision Commission, and it has to go twelve months. Whereas we could finish this Charter Revision Commission. And the Board of Selecting could impanel another one to move forward. And and even further than that, we wouldn't have to wait till the election. I know what I was attempting to do, Carol, and I do understand. You know where you're coming from, but I don't necessarily know that setting a limitation on either the number of times you can impanel a Charter Revision Commission, or the timing of that Charter Revision Commission is is a positive. I don't I don't see it as you have to impanel them and give them a year to do it. I totally understand if if I sat there and said to you, tear the entire Charter apart and do the whole thing. Yeah, you'd need a year to really go through section by section, word by word, to make sure you're correct. And that you're getting to where you want to be. Even my issue of the town council, it's a change of government. It's not that drastic of a change. If you think it through from a common sense perspective, it's a change. Yes, no one likes it, but I don't necessarily know that twelve months. I just think it's another limiting factor.
Yeah, twelve months seems a lot to me also. I would, I I think the idea that there should be some minimum length of time that the Charter Commission has to work with before it comes up against a hard deadline. I mean, we have these hard deadlines because things have to get on the ballot.
And they do have to get on the ballot. There could also be a special referendum vote for that. The problem is, we have to have certain number turnout for that referendum. So it doesn't necessarily have to go on November ballot either. But have it as a referendum.
So having it as a referendum would be more expensive though, also than just having it at the same time as a general election.
Right, rather than have it as a question on the ballot during the general election. That is correct. It was an additional couple thousand dollars to the town have that special referendum.
And you know, Carol, one thing that I would sit there and I wouldn't mind if we sat there and found a way to put this into the Charter is that any Charter revisions need to get on a November ballot. And and the reason, and and just so everybody here understands what I was trying to do is I was trying to get a Charter Revision on the presidential ballot because it will be the most attended election that we have in the four year cycle. And so it was to give the most opportunity for the majority of the people that don't participate in government to have a say on something that I believe is important. I mean, we're not going to get done what I wanted to get done in this Charter Revision Commission, but we are going to get done a lot of good things. So I don't necessarily I I would tell you, the only way to do a Charter Revision in my mind is to put it on a November ballot and cycle it to the presidential election. And Carol, I apologize, I was late. So.
Well, while we've got this idea out, I mean, suppose we say, no, we're not gonna ever go to a a special referendum. It has to be on a general election, and there has to be a minimum three months. Does that sound workable? Does that sound like it has negatives associated with it?
Why limit us at all? Why limit the, why handcuff the?
I would try to say a minimum of six months, just because of the statute directed date. We have to have the public hearing. We have to have our meetings. We have to have final public hearings at the end. So if we, I just don't want to see us make a rush decision on something. Because we have deadlines that are statutory deadlines, and we don't have a way to change. I just, rather than a three month block, that's kind of tough to really go out and do the research and review. I think if we can't do the twelve months, I I I will totally agree with the six month, because you do need time. If you don't need the full six months, you don't need it, but at least you have the six months. But we're getting a minimum of six months notice is all I'm saying to enact the Charter Revision Commission because the Board of Selectmen, you know, it says they shall review or cause to be reviewed from time to time as they be necessary. So their hands aren't tied as far as doing that, but at least give that minimum of six months so we can do our job correctly.
Well, from my perspective, it sounds like we have a whole lot of different thoughts on this. And ju- just as a digression, something that's that's become obvious to me the last couple of of meetings. And so I ask for help whenever it's it seems obvious. When things require a a a motion and a vote to proceed. And it seems like this is one of them, though. Whether or not we proceed on this, or whether we just move on with the things that are that are on our plate already.
Yeah, you're in you're in public comment still, and we're all just commenting as public folks when you want to come out. And if there's someone on this committee that wants to make a motion and be recognized by the Chair, Roberts Rules of Parliamentary Procedure allow that to happen.
Or we could
Do that under item four.
We could do it under item four also.
Okay, I mean, just so, you know, we're all aware, this Charter Revision Commission can do anything that it wants. So Carol is not out of line to sit there and attempt to do this. I mean, listen, I read this and and there's, I read the Charter again, and there's typos in our Charter. I would like to correct the typos in the Charter. So it's 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 a motion that eventually I'll make. Will we agree to just like not say horde, let's say bored. Let's get rid of dashes. And 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 so Carol, anything that anybody on this panel, you want to do something, you want to attempt to do something. If it's common sense, and it and it and it you know, you you gotta put it up. I mean, there's no reason, the reason I put up the town council is to me, it's common sense. Everybody doesn't have to agree with me. That's democracy. That's how we work. So let's move on. So come out of public speak and let's just make motions and talk about the items that are out there. And let's see how quickly we can get all the information to the town attorney so he can draft something and we can sit there and keep reviewing.
Thank you, Jeff. All right, let's then come out of public speak unless anyone has any other items that they want to bring to the floor.
Who's the Samsung? Who's the Samsung? I'm assuming that phone.
Samsung SMA one forty six U.
Would that individual like to comment or participate or who are they really? So we can understand.
Yeah, well, we need to know for the record. Member of the public who's calling in on a cell phone, can you please identify yourself, unmute and identify?
Okay.
Well.
Just let's keep muted. Let's go.
Okay, so move on to item three, approval of the minutes.
All right.
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes for the public hearing and our three special meetings as written. I'll second that motion.
Karen got it.
Okay, so moved by Carol, seconded by Karen. Has everyone had time to examine these prior to this meeting? We all in a position to be able to vote intelligently. I know I am.
Let's go.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Six zero zero, the minutes are approved. All right, so item four, discussion and possible action on any Charter Review issue. So when we last left this dollar amounts was approved, early voting dates of elections were approved. We had continued until this week. Referendum voting to align the Board of Education, Carol, that was your item, unmute yourself. There you go. What do you have?
Get myself organized. I was not expecting to be first. I am sorry.
I'll tell you what, you can get your get your stuff together. We'll let's just talk about a few of these other things while you're organized. So number five, the town clerk position was Adrian. He's not with us right now, so we're gonna have to defer that. Along with number ten, the supplemental appropriation, which would trigger a referendum vote that was also Adrian. Jeff, would you like to talk about your ordinance procedures? I saw that you circulated a nice document, so let us know your thoughts.
Okay, so on the ordinance issue, the main issue is we have some confusion in the current process from a minor ordinance to a major ordinance and how they would go through and flow through the current process within the Charter. So the issue from my standpoint would be to there's no more there would be no more major or minor, there would only be ordinances, and the ordinances would be able to be created and approved through the process by the Board of Selectmen. And the sections that I identified that you would have to adjust where it'd be definition section one oh five. Basically eliminating the ordinance, the minor ordinance information and saying that the current or all the ordinances that are currently in place are is in effect. And then you would move on to three oh one into the general, and you would sit there and make some language and some terminology about the legislative authority of the town should be shared by the Board of Selectmen of the town meeting. The town meeting shall have final authority for final approval of those actions of the town and thereafter or hereafter enumerated in section three oh four, three oh four. It relates to the special town meetings called. And so it would then go on to sit there and say, the Board of Selections shall have legislative authority for all matters, not specifically enumerated hereafter in section three oh four, including but not limited to the authority to approve and act, repeal, and modify all ordinances after a public hearing. And also those powers enumerated in section four oh two, which I'll get to in the future, and also those powers formally assigned to the town meeting per section four oh three D of this Charter. So in section four oh three, under the special town meetings, it's the town meeting would remain in effect, all financial issues, everything else related to what we've been dealing with in the past. And this section, we would sit there and strike the four oh three D and then the four oh three J, which relate to ordinance and ordinance approvals. And it's the same thing under petition town meetings to remove three oh four D and three oh four J. So if you go in and you read those. And why don't we do that if you guys don't mind? Three oh four D, so I highlighted what I needed to deal with. D three oh four D is the creation, consolidation, modification, and abolition of a permanent board, commission, department, or agency not otherwise provided for in this Charter. However, provided in this Charter, provided however, any newly created board, department, or agency of commission shall come under the provisions contained in this Charter. So what I'm saying here is this section is eliminating the need to go to a special town meeting. If the Board of Selectmen determines they want to create a board. So let's sit there and say a board that is currently not operating, that's in the Charter. You know, and we wouldn't, we wouldn't do it. We really should beef it up is there's an ordinance committee that's in there, but the every once in a while, while I've been on the Board of Selecting, we've created a a boards. And so this is, if you wanted to create a permanent board, you just don't have to go to town meeting to do this. We probably, it's not something that I think you would want to go to town meeting. It's not financial. I don't think it has any significant need to sit there and deal with that. And then the other item that we're talking about is three oh four J. The approval, repeal, or modification of any town ordinance when positioned pursuant to the provisions of section three oh five, the Charter is amended, providing said ordinances are not inconsistent with any other provisions of this Charter or with the Connecticut general statute. So those are the two items that would be moved from town meeting to the Board of Selectmen. And the other items that we would sit there and deal with related to this is you would get to the Board of Selectmen in the general powers, which is four oh two. Just tells the board, so it says minor currently, and it's now going, it would now say to enact, amend, or appeal ordinances, providing they are not inconsistent with this Charter and not legally inconsistent with the general statutes of the state of Connecticut. Also, under four oh two. Whoops. Sorry about that. Four oh two B to enact ordinances, creating, consolidating, modifying, or abolishing agencies, commissions, boards, and other authorities not otherwise provided for in this Charter. And then you would move on to public hearing. And this section shall remain intact, except the phrase not covered by section one oh five H shall be deleted, and we would change the waiting period from twenty one days to replace with forty five days. Now, the one thing that I don't have here, and it's something that I need to we talked about three things that I've covered in here. The three things were timing. We talked about timing to give a minimum time for people to get. One thing that I don't have here is, so the public hearing is in here. So the three things we had is public hearing, a forty five day review period. And then we were talking about the percentage of of people needed to petition to move this to a referendum. And in our Charter after my read today was, we don't have anything that sits there. And Carol, unless you're gonna tell me I missed it. A way for the public to petition to get to something to referendum. There is the information for petitioning to move to town meeting. But that's the whole point of this is to try to minimize the things that have to go to town meeting. I would rather it go to a referendum and have it be on the voting cycle. A normal voting cycle as opposed to even a special election. And I to to frame this in understanding, we we just had Jeff Murray. We've had a problem at the town, at the at the new field. And of dogs. Residents bringing dogs down to the park and having the dogs at the park. And we've had this discussion at our Board of Select, we probably fifteen times, like what to do with people who are down at the the town fields and their dogs defecating on the field and to pass that ordinance and find those people, we have to go, the Board of Select would have to go to town meeting to get this passed. This is the, this is what this is. This is not a, you know, we need this overall craziness to sit there and dictate to the town certain things, but there are things that don't need to go to town meeting that are common sense that should get approved. So and that one is one of them. So we just, it was just brought up by one of the other selectmen to potentially create an ordinance, and we had the discussion, is it a minor or a major ordinance? So those are, those are the items. That's what I would, I would recommend we provide to the town attorney to sit there and determine whether it's good or bad, or if it needs to be changed. But those are the things that I'd like to see put in place.
The only thing is we do not have in our Charter petition process. So Hebron, if you look at their Charter, section four zero five, there's a power of overruled ordinances adopted by the Board of Selectmen. It clearly spells out what a resident would do if they did not agree with that ordinance. It says that petition is filed within twenty days after the final action. And two percent of the electors of the town would have to sign that petition in order to force that ordinance to potentially be overturned at a referendum.
I have no problem with that. I agree with that. I just did not have the wording when I wrote it up today.
And I can send this over to you if you want. I mean, real clear here and
And no problem stealing from Hebron or anybody else.
No, because the Charter is Hebron's Charter, the one that we adopted in nineteen ninety nine was exactly Hebron's Charter, word for word, including the section numbers. The only things that were changed were modified to fit the town of the end.
Oh, give me, if you guys don't mind, I have to go run and do one thing. That's why my alarm went off. So give me one second. I'll be right back.
All right, well, while Jeff is doing that thing. He told us how long he was gonna be gone for.
Can we, can, um when I, when I heard what you described, it sounded similar to section three oh five A. And then it talks about going to referendum, two percent going to referendum. Is that different than what you were just describing? That's sort of petitioning for town meeting, but then there's a note there that talks about going to referendum from the town meeting. And what what kind of struck me a bit on based on what Jeff had, he was striking three oh four J, which kind of referenced this three oh five. So I I didn't quite I wasn't following it in that regard. So I'm just trying to understand three oh five A, what is that really saying to us?
So it's saying that a petition town meeting, so it's forcing something to go to a petitioned town meeting. This would just force it to go to a referendum vote.
Jody, the the issue would be not to have town meetings unnecessarily if we could at all possibly avoid it. I mean, I I always look at town meetings, it's financial. Everybody in this town should have the rights to go and financially deal with anything in town. Have no problem with that. Some of the other things are just you know, more clerical, more operational, and and you're going to a town meeting to explain why you want to have an ordinance for dogs on the field. That's kind of my my mental side. It's always been my mental side of it. It's like, I gotta go, I, and we've held off doing a lot of ordinances. And pushing for the town meetings because, you know, we've had them and we're going, well, why do we want to spend the money to have a town meeting? And I know Carol will say two grand, but two grand is two grand. So. But don't you aggregate those like? We do. The last time we aggregated them, I mean, that's why this last town meeting had like seven items on the town meeting, because we averaged graded them. So your your intent is really to try to make government a bit more efficient. You're trying to give more latitude to the five Board of Selectmen that thirty two hundred people elected to enact ordinances. But I guess I just, as a layperson, I'm just trying to understand, where's the line? Like, could you, I don't know, you know, a thousand dollar a day ordinance through the Board of Selectmen for people who have white mailboxes? I mean, it sounds crazy, but I'm just trying to understand, is there, how do you, how do you differentiate? I would tell you, I would tell you, the answer is probably yes, if I could convince the members of the board to do it. But that's not how it works. I mean, and you know, you know, we all know, it's it's not gonna first thing would be if I put in, if we put in something that was objectional to the town residents. I I would hope, and I probably would be there to probably try to go and overturn or move something to to a referendum and get it overturned. Okay, so the recourse for the town, let let's just say there's three crazy people on our Board of Selectmen for whatever reason. And they do something. The recourse for the town you're saying is, is what? Bring them to bring it to referendum? And get it overturned. Yeah, and then vote them out, you know?
Hey, let me ask, let me ask a question. Looking, looking to how the state does things for guidance and forgive me my you know, forgetting my my basic civics. So at the state level here in Connecticut, laws can get generally get passed two ways. They can get passed by the legislature. Somebody, somebody brings something to the floor of the legislature, they debate it, they amend it, they voted in. They can get passed by the legislature. Somebody, somebody brings something to the floor of the legislature. They debate it. They amend it. They voted in and a law gets passed that way. But laws can also get passed through public vote, through referendum. What makes things go one way or another? Because, you know, at the town level, we're talking about being able to make it through the elected legislative body versus through a direct vote. And that's, that's mirrored at the state level. So what triggers when something is done one way versus the other at the state level?
Well, first of all, I'm not aware that in the state of Connecticut, you can put something on a ballot measure and get it passed. Um, I know in California you can. I know in other states you can, but I don't think in Connecticut you can do that. But, um, this is where there's a confusion within our charter, our charter. Because there's the minor ordinance and, you know, everything else, like what falls into a minor ordinance, what falls into what's considered a major ordinance. And what, so the issue ends up being it's an ordinance. You elected the board of selectmen to sit there and be your, your representatives. Allow them to pass ordinances. I'm just telling you, I can't, I could sit there and see Jody's point before three crazy people get on the board and put in an ordinance that's problematic. That's true. I could see it, but.
So I think that maybe that was Carol's point about what's saying, say it happens. So what's the sort of safety for the town? How do we bring it to referendum? Is that in the charter?
No, that was what Carol was talking about.
What Carol was saying, we need something like Hebron has where people could get in an uproar and bring it for referendum.
Yeah, it absolutely, that absolutely has to be. That was something we discussed.
Good.
We discussed, um, so the points I'm addressing and what I brought forth, uh, are the points up until the way that we go about and, and push something to referendum and challenge it. So Carol has that language from Hebron. We should provide that. I'm, I'm all in agreement. It's got to be in there. Except we don't have it in our current charter because the only thing that we petitioned to is the town meeting. And what I'm saying is we need to try to stop petitioning it to the town meeting and petition it to a referendum. To, to move on.
And currently for ordinances, it, as the legislative body is the people, people of the town of Andover, the electors, that is why we have to bring ordinances to town meeting, whether it be a special town meeting. Usually it is a special town.
It's always a special time meeting, right? The only time meeting that's scheduled is the budget town meeting, but.
You know, Jeff's special town meeting. Jeff, I, I like this because I like the streamlined component of it. But it gives me a little bit of heartburn because it kind of brings up the notion of the relative strength and authority of the town meeting versus the board of selectmen. Who gets the, the power to do what? Where, where are the limits on that authority? And, and that still stays a little bit vague in my mind.
I, because it's the legislative power that's given to the people. And now we're, we're taking it away, even though we're providing them with a petition process that's clearly spelled out. You just need to get a petition with about forty people's signature on it, and we are forcing this to referendum. There's no fifties or butts about, um, but still, like what Bob is saying, you are taking the authority away from the legislative body, uses that rules of the town meeting.
Well, what we're doing is we're taking it away from the potential forty people that attend a town meeting and giving it to all of the people who come and vote. And, and that's what you're doing. You're not, you're not making it a, uh, you know, you're not. You, you're sitting there with the, the town meeting and first of all, you're making, you're making it much more easy to, to to tackle problems at the board of selectmen level and very quickly and very easily. That's one. And then what you're doing is you're providing the town with the opportunity to vote on something if they choose to. And, and I would sit there and say, any ordinance, even one that's on the books could be petitioned. I, I don't want to limit this to just the newest of ordinances. Every ordinance at any time should be able to be petitioned. If it's, if it's deemed not worthy by a group of residents. But what I'm trying to get to is it, just like the charter revision, going here at this time to try to get on the presidential election, it's try to get the most participation within town. And, and that's what I'm driving at. Like you could put up a, an ordinance and you get forty five people at a town meeting and they're dictating everything that happens for the other, you know, twenty seven, twenty five hundred voting residents of the town. Whereas you're at a, an election or at a referendum, you're giving them all, they don't all show. I mean, Carol, what do we average? Forty, fifty, sixty percent of the people come to vote?
At that, but you could have the same forty five people show up at the referendum. So I hear what Bob is saying because the legislative body, whether it's forty or fifty or seventy six, like our last town meeting. We're taking their voice away. And I know that you're an elected board of five, but we're giving it to a board of five. Then someone has to motivate it to go out and collect forty signatures for si- for referendum. And we may still only have the same forty five people show up at the referendum to vote.
Well, not if the referendums are always dictated on November. You know, and, and.
So you're saying rather than have a referendum, so if you enact an ordinance in January, someone petitions within twenty days. We're going to hold off that question until the November election, regardless of whether or not.
I mean, you don't know, we've waited so long on so many things. What's the difference? If somebody wants to do that and I'm, I'm okay. It's just like, is, are there going to be twenty one residents or are there going to be forty some odd residents come out and, um, well, and it probably will happen. So I probably shouldn't say it, but come out on the dog ordinance that, I mean, the litter, you know, the way I think it was phrased in our meeting was dog and litter ordinance. Um, we haven't drafted it. We have to talk to the town attorney, but that was the issue. So now if you, let's sit there and say, we tried to do this and we had, um, two percent of the residents, uh, of the electors of the town. So basically forty eight people came out and said, we're not going to accept this. I would tell you, yeah, let's put it on the November ballot. Why not? I mean, why, it's, it, our town of Andover moves pretty slow as it is. But if it gets past the twenty one, and it's not a twenty one day, it was a forty five day because Adrian requested additional time. And I was okay with additional time. Um.
But if we were to follow the power of overrule ordinances with Hebron, section B says the selectmen shall call a special referendum be held within thirty days of the certification of. So.
Why not? Why not say, Carol, that the ordinance does not go into effect and gets put on the next acceptable ballot? It, it can wait. Like, it's not gonna.
And I, I guess we could do that, but then again, we could be forcing someone to wait eleven months to have their question that they petitioned or go on about. I.
But I, I wouldn't, we wouldn't put it into effect.
No, no. And I hear what you're saying, but the people who go out and take the time to get the petition signed are now waiting eleven months for result. And I, I hear what you're saying. I see you laughing, but the, the thing is, is that we're trying to avoid special meetings, right? So a lot of these ordinances are coming into effect and people aren't happy with it. They could be petitioning.
Yeah, but, but, but I think I thought what I heard Jeff say is that if you invoked the petition to referendum and you were successful in getting the amount. Yeah. Are you saying that that puts a stay on that ordinance until the election? So it doesn't go in effect until the town actually votes on it. So Carol, it, it's kind of a good way. I mean, it's kind of taking what Hebron has and modifying a bit.
I, I'm actually giving more authority to those forty five people that want to sit there and challenge this. I'm not giving less. I'm, I'm sitting there saying, hey, if you think that this is a bad decision for the town and you want to put it forth, okay, put it forth and we'll stay it till a general election. Carol, if I'm the first selectman, I'm waiting to the budget meeting to put my ordinance forth anyway. So to be really honest, it's going to sit and just stay, right? Until there's an organized meeting so that the town doesn't waste any money. So if you're gonna, if you ask, if you want to give everybody the appropriate, it's a forty five day wait till be enacted. So let's sit there and say, we pass an ordinance next month, right? We have a forty five day wait till it can go into effect. If someone sits there and gathers the number of signatures required, it would have to then go on the next ballot. And I might even miss November. Because I don't, it's not enough time, right? It could potentially miss November to get on the ballot for referendum. I, I, me as first, as a selectman, I'd be okay, push it all the way. I want it in place. I'm thinking I'm doing the right thing for the community. But if there's enough community backlash, I'm not negative to backlash. I, I this, we got to overcome it. So.
But, but what if we're talking about an ordinance that has to deal with, with public health and safety, you know? It seems trivial, but the dog poop in the park. So you guys pass an ordinance. Somebody petitions that, uh, no, we don't want that. Now we've got to wait until November. That's an awful lot of poop building up in the meantime. So on the one hand, by not having to go to town meeting, we've streamlined the process. But by the same token, if it has to go to general election, now we've slowed it down again.
Slowed it down one way or the other. So I'm trying to pick the, the one that I think is going to be the least, uh, rocky. And I think as long as we don't do, as long as the board of selectmen does not do something crazy, I don't necessarily think you're going to have pushback.
This comes back to what, what you're saying and what Jody says. And, and, you know, a lot of what you see in Washington at certain times, yes, our system is predicated upon people acting rationally and honorably.
That's the only thing we've done. So I, I, I'm, I'm sitting there saying that I, I think that the Andover Board of Selectmen is rational and they're not going to put up anything that's so crazy that there's going to be an ungodly amount. So we have to have a public hearing. So we've already agreed, there's a public hearing before it even gets approved. Then there would be a forty five day waiting period to get enacted, to allow residents to sit there and collect enough signatures to push back against it. And then if they gather the right amount of signatures, it gets pushed off until the next regularly scheduled election. I don't see how more common sense and fair it could be.
And I think, I think that does a good job of giving the board of selectmen latitude to act. But then has that checks and balances for the town to say, whoa, hold on a second. And, and I think, I think, you know, as long as the, they act in a way that forty five people aren't going to get in an uproar over, then, you know, the common sense thing, like that, you know, there's already signs posted, don't walk your dog there. Um, but, um, so to me it has that right balance. I'm sorry, Carol, I cut you off. Go ahead.
I, I just, I've been kind of looking at other towns' charters and now like minor ordinance definitions. And there was one that said to maintain public health and safety, zoning, behavior and general welfare. And then they gave examples of, they said noise, no remove, that was strict. Building and zoning regulations. Those are just some that I notated there, um, after I looked at that. So there is a way if we're to define minor versus major. They could do that in a general way, like this, maybe add a little more, give a few more examples. Um, but I do agree if we are going to move forward with allowing board of selectmen to take that legislative authority to be, be ordinances. We do have to have that script.
Wait, can you send around the Hebron language that sort of has, has it go into town referendum? I mean, or maybe, maybe were you going to send that to Jeff and was he going to update it?
I can.
Because I think that's the safeguard. That's the, that's the way that we make sure that as towns folks, that nothing goes, you know, that's, and I don't, I don't think we have to, um, you know, the minor and the major still just, I think, even with general categories, I think that's what'll lead to confusion. Um, it's almost like, uh, you know, ask for a little bit of ask for forgiveness as opposed to asking for permission. So what we're doing here is we're giving our town leaders that we've all elected the ability to enact common sense ordinance, uh, without asking for permission. Right? They're not taking it to town meeting. They're, they're, they're acting, they're doing something. Um, but we as a town have recourse to say, no, that's crazy. Don't do that.
It sounds like we're all in general consensus with the concept as it's been discussed and, and modified. And it sounds like there's some additional language that needs to be put in from what Jeff has presented today to get this to a, a final concept. Everybody agree on that?
So I still need a little bit of work to do. So Carol, you share, you shared that with me and, and what, what I'm taking from the conversation is that if someone petitions to go to referendum and successful with the numbers within the forty five day timeframe, right? So we've extended the timeframe because we have a, a twenty one day timeframe somewhere in our charter and we're increasing that to forty five days. So we delay implementation for the forty five days. And then if someone is successful in gathering the signatures to petition for a town referendum, we hold off implementation until the referendum vote. When that occurs and, and I'm a believer that it happens at a normal election to allow for the most, the most. I don't want to, special things upset me because like we call a special meeting or we call a special town, town meeting, or we call a special referendum. They're all added time, added money that, that I'm not, I'm not a big proponent of. So I would rather push it all the way to the election and, and delay it. So everybody gets their fair hearing on it. And if the board of selectmen wants to put forth an, an ordinance and it gets past the forty five days, then it goes into effect. Then it's in effect though. So let's just all be clear. It's in effect. People can then after the forty five days determine that they don't like the ordinance and petition again. But it's in effect until the next election when it gets voted on again. Right? Is that fair? Right? Is that common sense what I'm explaining? So I'll sit there and go rebuild that. Carol, if you share me the, the petitioned referendum language, I'll sit there and have this for next meeting so that we can all.
Okay.
Agree.
I'll get that all.
Let me just run one, one additional scenario. So the, the board of selectmen, um, passes an ordinance and the town petitions and says, no, you know, this needs to, to go to referendum. The board of selectmen thinks that this item needs to be worked on, needs, needs to be acted upon so strongly. They could then withdraw that ordinance, modify it. You know, and perhaps that modified ordinance now goes into effect. And so you don't have to wait until the election for, for an upper, up or down.
Uh, I, I, I agree with that. I mean, I would also think honestly that that would probably happen at the public hearing. You know, the assumption is that we're having a public hearing. We're going through all of the steps to try to get something done. So people who are negative to an ordinance would hopefully come to the public hearing and give us their opinion and tell us, hey, we don't like this. This is what you really need to be doing. And then we would hopefully write that into our new ordinance. So it would take that issue off the table so that the resident doesn't try to go out and get forty five signatures or forty eight signatures. So. I mean, listen, nothing happens in a vacuum. The, I mean, you can't sit there and get things done on the board because you have to have enough votes to get people to agree to it. And if the community doesn't agree with it, we just need to give them recourse to sit there and say, hey, we don't like what you're doing and you gotta change. Um, so I have no problem doing that because I don't sit there and anticipate putting forth any ordinance that the members of our board here would sit there and have a huge problem with. Um, so I, I, I have no problem. Let me do it. Let me come back to you guys again. I'll give you the more of the language and then you guys can sit there and but review what I've given you already so that you're familiar with those sections and we're, we're comfortable with what is changing. Or would change. I shouldn't say is changing, but potentially will change. So.
Great stuff, Jeff. Thank you very much. Um, Carol.
Okay, I'm ready now.
Okay.
So. If we were to. if we were to decide to vote on the same day as the RAM budget referendum, we would have to move our dates up that are in the charter, section eight oh two. So what I did, because Hebron has already done this, I just took language from their charter and some of the dates from their charter. So under section eight oh two duties on the budget, we would add no later than October fifteenth. The Board of Finance shall confer with the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Education to discuss the roles and objectives for the upcoming budget. The Board of Finance may suggest a target increase for expenditures for both the general government and Board of Education budgets. However, the target increases shall not be binding with respect to budget transmittals. So that would be sections eight oh two A. Then if you go down to eight oh two B, agency and department heads, we would delete the one hundred and twenty days. And we would put one hundred and fifty days. And then, um, the next sentence, the head of each department officer, agency of the town supported wholly or imparted by town funds except the regional Board of Education and the local Board of Education shall file with the town administrator a detailed estimate of expenditures to be made by that department, officer, agency, and the revenues other than property taxes to be collected thereby in the ensuing fiscal year. Such estimate shall be accompanied by a statement setting forth the services, activities and work accomplished during the current year and planned for accomplishment in the ensuing fiscal year. The local Board of Education budget must be submitted to the Board of Finance by February fifteenth. Then section C, you would add duties of the town administrator. The town administrator shall review the budget estimates upon completion of the review and not later than one hundred and twenty days prior to the end of the fiscal year. The town administrator shall present to the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance a proposed budget. In preparing the proposed budget, the town administrator may comment and make recommendations on the budget requests made by various departments, offices and agencies. And then we would add section D where it would say there shall be budget review meetings in March, which shall be joint meetings of the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance. Where a forum of at least one of the two boards is required to conduct business. Then section E would remain the same. The only thing that we would do is after the, uh, first sentence, the Board of Finance shall review the budget estimates with the heads of all town-supported departments, offices and agencies as needed. I would just suggest that we put in as needed because if the Board of Finance deems that that review is not necessary with the heads of the departments, they could just move forward. And then if we were to add section E with a one after it, upon completion of the review and not later than eighty-five days prior to the end of the fiscal year, the Board of Finance shall hold a public hearing on their recommended budget. Then we'll keep all the sections that, uh, dictate the requirements that what the proposed budget should include. Okay, and then everything would stay the same right through. Then when we go to section eight zero three, the annual town budget meeting and referendum, instead of being held in one of the first ten days, we would now put in the annual town budget meeting shall be held in the second week of April. The proposed budget shall be the only substantive matter, matter presented to the annual town budget meeting for adoption pursuant to the provisions of this section. It is the intent of this term that the provisions of the general statutes governing town meetings as contained in section seven dash seven shall not apply to the adoption of this budget. Then if you move down to eight oh three B, we would delete the first sentence, if a quorum, you know, starting with if a quorum, all the way down to adopt or reject the budget. We would remove the first two and a half lines. And then pick up with the town meeting may make amendments to the proposed budget. However, that the town meeting shall only have the power to reduce or modify, but not increase the budget or any manner. And then keep, uh, the town meeting may not alter any specific items contained in the budget proposed by the local Board of Education. Then we would remove the next line that says if the budget is rejected all the way down. So it would be three and little over three lines. And then we would insert the town meeting shall adjourn to a referendum to be held on the Tuesday following the first Monday mid. And leave in that voting by absentee ballot at referendum is allowed. So, and then basically the remainder of the sections would just be, um, so eight oh three D would just be modified because it talks about the next town meeting if the budget is rejected. So just a few of the lines in that would be removed. But basically, um, what I've read is the only way really for us to redo our charter so that we are able to vote with the RAM budget referendum. And I will send it. I just, I don't know how to share my screen. So I will send this over. I highlighted in yellow what I'm suggesting that we remove. And in red, I've added what language we would put in, in its place.
That would be helpful for me to see it. So I could, I could read it and ask questions back. I don't think, I, I was trying to do the, the timing in my head. I don't think any of that really would put any of the departments out.
I don't either. I know it wouldn't affect my department because the Board of Selectmen is asking Eric to gather that information in December anyway. So we all basically have a general idea of what's going to be coming up in the next fiscal year. Be able to properly budget for that and let you know.
So, so if we're talking about the biggest change to what we're doing, other than timing for the individuals, the individual departments, the biggest change that we're doing is we're not asking the town meeting to vote the budget up or down. We're asking the town meeting to make recommendations for any adjustments down that they believe they want. And if the town meeting approves those downs, that's the budget that goes to referendum.
Correct. Because that's the only way to do that. Because if we were to allow the town meeting to not send that budget forward to referendum, we would not be able to meet that, uh, statutory requirement for the RAM referendum.
Okay, so. So just as we all think about this, what we're doing is we're allowing the individuals at the town meeting to come and, and, uh, evaluate and make recommendations, especially downward recommendations, you know?
That's what they're allowed to do right now anyway.
And, and those downward recommend, uh, uh, recommendations, if are, if they are approved, become part of the budget that ends up at referendum. And so now we're moving the up and down vote from the, the town meeting to town referendum. So we're giving a bigger pool of individuals the opportunity to vote on that budget.
That is correct.
I don't have any problem with it. I mean, I'd like to see it written so I could understand what we're the language we're trying to change and how we would get this to the town attorney, but I, I don't have a problem with it.
I will send that out and I can forward this over to Dennis too. So he can, I, we would want him to do that anyway. Just to make sure that I'm not omitting anything that legally we have to have in there.
All right. So it sounds like this is kind of in the same boat as, uh, what, what Jeff did. You'll circulate it around. We can all look at it. We can bring it back to the floor next week and hopefully put it to bed at that point. Okay. Well, I think I'm up at this point. Not having a first selectman elected and instead have a chairperson like in the Board of Selectmen, like in the Board of Education, Board of Finance. So I went back and spent a little bit more time looking at the Connecticut general statutes, which, uh, put me to sleep several times. Um, it's quite a mind-numbing set of documents. But I didn't find anything in there that really jumped off the page. And granted, I'm an electrical engineer. I'm not a lawyer. I'm not a professional statesman. But what I ended up doing was going back to the, uh, the charter as we have now, and I'm gonna share my screen here. So you can all see what I did here. Okay, are you all getting that? You see the charter over here on the, uh, right here that I'm moving around?
Yeah, we see it on the right side.
Yeah, okay. But it looks like I just minimized a whole bunch of other documents. So it should just be that one document. Okay, let me make a big. Actually, that doesn't really help. So I'm gonna start up at the top. So I just did a search for first selectman. And it appears twenty-seven times in the document. And I just wanted to, here, let me just start right from the top. And obviously there's a chapter on it. The first place that it's mentioned is in town officers, general election. So we would take out one of whom shall be a designated nominee for the office of first selectman. A political party may nominate no more than four members. This was the discussion that we had last week. If we're gonna take this out. So that's.
No, well.
No?
I wasn't in favor of it. I researched it.
So still leave it at three?
Yes, we didn't make, yes.
Okay.
Unless someone wanted to motion, make a recommend, uh, a motion for it, I would leave it at three.
Yeah, all right. I, I was.
I like, I'm following your method. You wanna understand what are the ramifications of.
Went through the document, so we'll just leave it at three. Okay. Political party may nominate no more than three members. And we strike the language of the designated nominee for the office of first selectman. Okay, moving forward. Um, this town meeting procedure, there's still court called to order by the first selectman or vice first selectman. That doesn't really need to change. Again, in.
But you would just change the name, right? You would call it the, would there still be a first selectman? Called the chairperson of.
No, there's, there's enough language in the general statutes that I think we would leave it as the first selectman. Because there is still duties that that individual duties and responsibilities that that person has.
Essentially, we're just, we're not making it elected. We're making it appointed by the Board of Selectmen.
Right. That's what I, you know, the homework that I wanted to do was, are we gonna run afoul of the, the general statutes by, by doing this? And I didn't really see anything that, that jumped off the page. So let me just keep, keep going through this. So you know, town meetings, calling to order the first selectman, blah, blah, blah. So that's just some procedures there. Whoops. What did I just close there? Review. You, uh, navigation pane. Here we go. Click the wrong button there. So. Hang on. All right. This is again, just, uh, stuff that happens in the town meeting where the first selectman is really just in a moderator capacity. Um, this talks about the general, the, the Board of Selectmen and how previous, prior to this, the board by a majority vote would select the vice first selectman while we add a first selectman and a vice first selectman by majority vote. And again, just a little change in language here, these positions, such positions, et cetera, et cetera. Moving forward. Public emergencies, uh, the town administrator or the first selectman uh, can deputize people, summon marshal, et cetera, et cetera. And this is the first selectman acting in their capacity as chief of police. Um, and again, what does it say in the, the general statutes? Well, there are some towns that have appointed chiefs of police as well as elected ones. So there's no real loss of applicability there. We go to chapter five that talks specifically about the first selectman. We strike, the first selectman shall be the chief elected officer of the town since he's no longer the chief elected officer. But remains a voting and participating member of the board and an ex officio member of the other town commissions, boards and agencies. So there, the first selectman doesn't vote on these other agencies boards, but can attend their meetings and speak up. Except as otherwise provided by the charter, shall have all the powers, duties and responsibilities conferred by law. Again, this doesn't really change, except it's an appointed versus a separately elected position. Let me see. So here, now this is something I just kind of applied my own judgment. Um, this talks about uh, the town attorney, he shall upon written request of the first selectman or Board of Selectmen. Well, I struck first selectman and I just left Board of Selectmen. It seems to me, um, do we want to leave the first selectman with the independent authority to marshal the town, uh, attorney? And, uh, forward things, you know, questions of law and whatnot, or should that just be at the request of the Board of Selectmen? I don't really know. What do you think, Jeff? Unmute yourself.
You're probably gonna have to leave that one because while currently we have a town attorney that is extremely flexible, we're not gonna always have that town attorney. And if you give the authority for every member to be able to communicate, causes a, causes a problem.
Well, I think when we say upon written request of the Board of Selectmen, maybe it needs additional language upon a written request of a majority of the Board of Selectmen. So it requires consensus.
Let the attorney sit there and, and, and weigh in on that one.
Okay. I mean, he's gonna look at all this stuff also. So, all right, we'll leave that as it, as it stands for the attorney's feedback. And again, I don't think there are any other changes in here. I just have, you know, the, the search located the places where first selectman appears. And I don't think it really changes the rights, responsibilities or actions here. Checks shall be signed by the town administrator and the absence or inability of the town administrator. The first selectman shall act for the town administrator. Should that be the town administrator? Should it be the town clerk? Carol? Any thoughts on that?
And I'm sorry.
Yeah.
For selectmen?
I'm just throwing out ideas here since.
Checks, it's check signing. Carol does not want that.
No, I, I don't want. I, I mean, I, I will do that if, if you need me to. I mean, that's I don't have that right now.
And I'm just asking what makes the most sense. Leave it as it is. We leave it as it is.
I mean, I am in the building, so if it's good for the town, I don't mind signing.
We have a financial officer to in town?
We do a town treasurer and a. We do a town treasurer and a town finance individual.
Right, we have lots of people that could potentially do this.
But the problem is, I think when they're writing the checks, they don't want to be the signer. So that's because it used to be, I think it was you, Jeff, and then Adrian was also assigned. So there was another member of the Board of Selectmen who could sign.
So we had the vice first selectman.
Right. So is Jeff currently a signer too, or no?
I don't believe that he got put on the the card. I think I'm, I'm it with, right now, it's myself, Eric and the Superintendent of Schools. Well, just keep going. You can
Sure.
We can sit there
Go around on
Adding the vice first selectman.
Yeah, obviously. Okay, resignations. Copy forwarded to the first selectman and the chairman of said agency. I don't see any reason to change that. Okay, this is the transition stuff from 1999. We leave that language in here. And what I've added here is a new section two. At the regular municipal election to be held in November 2027, there shall be elected five members for a term of four years. The prior practice for separately electing a first selectman shall be discontinued at this time. So that's just like the prior transition language when the Charter was enacted, this just supersedes what was there. We could take out what was there. We could leave it there for historical purposes. I say, let's just leave it there.
I just asked you to back up to the resignation part. Please.
Okay, yeah.
So it says, said resignation shall become effective upon acceptance by the both of the Board of Selectmen. That has absolutely nothing to do with someone's resignation. The minute that they sign it and they turn it in here to the town clerk's office. That's the date of their resignation. So I, I just, I don't know why that's in there because if Jeff wanted to resign tomorrow, he doesn't care if the rest of the Board of Selectmen accepts it or not. His resignation is effective the day he tells me or tells the town it's effective in his letter of resignation.
Can I do that?
No. But I'm just saying, I'm just saying, that is what happens. It is immediately when you bring it in here and it's stamped in.
All right. Well, you see what I just did here. Said resignation shall become effective upon receipt by the town clerk's office.
Thank you. That's the law. That's not me, but that's
Immediately. Okay.
I don't know if it's effective immediately. It's I think someone can resign.
Right, it depends. Right. So it's a
Based on, based on the resignation letter or whatever.
Right. For effect, it's effective the date dated in the resignation letter.
So we get rid of the entire language.
Yeah, when in doubt, don't have it.
Yeah. All right. Moving forward on first selectman. Resignation by town clerk shall be filled with the first selectman?
That is I have to bring that resignation to the first select.
Not, not to the town administrator?
No, the first select.
Okay. Is that state law also?
I will check the statute, but we do, we need to change, like Jeff was saying, some spelling errors.
Yeah.
To be first select man.
Uh huh.
We also need to highlight 1010 resignations. Make it in bold.
That's what this bar right here is. I'm doing markup within Word. Okay, anybody who works with Word understands that this is a change here. And that's, it's automatically doing these strikeouts and changing the, the font and everything.
Right, right. What I'm saying is up above section 1009 savings clause, that's bold. So section 1010 resignations should say bold.
Oh.
Be all in bold.
That's just, yeah, okay, a formatting change. I got you. Okay. Sorry about that. Now, format's important also. All right, moving forward here. First to the first select man. Yeah. First selector, but whatever.
Wait, 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 we're, I'm sorry, we're changing that?
What?
Selectman?
It was men. It was men plural.
Ah, got it. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yeah. You know, it's, it's subtle, but important.
I understand.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Right, this, we were, we were at this, right, we covered that. That's it.
Bob, where was their language that described the process of the Board of Selectmen selecting the first selectman? Was that in there?
Yes, I'll find it. Okay, so under Chapter Four, Board of Selectmen, 403. The prior procedure was at the first meeting, you know, following the town election, the Board of Selectmen shall fix a time and place of its regular meeting. At this meeting, the board by a majority vote of the entire membership shall select a, it just was vice first selectman. And I added first selectman and a, so that it's both, both positions.
Thank you.
And then there's some additional language here that basically says, if they can't do it at that meeting, they gotta do it at the next meeting. And again, made it more inclusive to, to show both positions.
And is it implied, or do we need to specify that that first selectman is one of the elected selectmen?
I think the prior language in here says that the first selectman is a an elected member.
Yeah, I would just want it to be clear that, you know, the, the, the five people couldn't say, oh, well, let's put someone else in or something funky like that.
Yeah, you know, it might have been something that was covered by the fact one of whom shall be the designated nominee of the Office of the First Selectman. And when we remove that, then the implication that you're talking about kind of goes away also. I mean, that's a subtle point, but I think it's important.
Yeah, it was just reflected on national politics and the Speaker of the House and they
Anybody could be Speaker of the House.
Right, which kind of seems weird, right? And so I was like, I want to make sure it's one of the five pointed, I mean, sorry, elected of the five, similar to, I think, how you, the, the Board of Ed probably has something like that. Or maybe it doesn't, right? That's how the Board of Ed works in town and Board of Finance. So I don't
Okay, so it's easy right here.
Okay.
From the boards elected membership. Membership. You know, that's, that's one way to put that language in there.
Works for me. Thanks, Bob.
Yeah, and we'll see what Dennis does with that language.
Okay. Ask one question on that. I know, Jody, that you had said, keep it at three. So basically, what we're doing is still only giving the electors six people to vote for. And the only thing that we're doing is we're removing the first selectman race. Because currently, the way our Charter reads is that the candidate who was not elected as first selectman would then be thrown into the pool of for Board of Select. So we're still limiting the electors in town, you know, our voters in town to the same number, six people. And I'm just curious why you wouldn't want to increase that amount? If our voters or candidates to vote for, rather than restricting and limiting just to the same six that they currently are able to vote for.
So Carol, we're limiting the number that can be nominated by each of the two major parties. Okay, somebody can always, as many people as you want, could, could petition and run as independents, couldn't they?
They can still do that now, but what I'm saying is if our Charter is still restricting just to the same six, the same number of candidates. The only thing is, we're just eliminating the Office of First Select.
Strip, strip, strip the number of, of people that can be put up out totally, and they'll put up three. So go ahead. It, it's it only makes sense from a political standpoint that you can eliminate the, the number of of candidates from each party, like they can put up 10 if they'd like.
Well, they would have to go by statute then, Jeff. I mean, by the election rules, not statute, but election rules as to the number of candidates that they so like if there's four seats up on the Board of Finance, each party can put up four candidates. The only one that that doesn't apply to is restrictive voting on our local Board of Education for each party to put up two.
Well, I think that's why they're doing it. It was done originally. And I, I will tell you what Jody's logic, when Jody, I read, reread Jody's information on it. And he asked the question, why would any party put up more than three people when the maximum number of, of your representative total can only be three? So if you put up four, you're then diluting your vote to your total. So you can get rid of the number and, and that's okay. And then a party can put up four or five. But they're really not going to do it because if, if a party puts up five and dilutes its vote, and what's going to happen is it's only going to get two members on the board. And the goal is for each one of these parties, they what, they won't.
But they're not diluting the vote because the number that each political party is allowed to put on the ballot is the number that the elector can vote. Well, they're going to vote for you. They're going to vote for you any. We're just giving the extra see what I'm saying? So it is not diluting the vote. The only thing that could potentially happen is if all, if, if the Democrats put up five candidates and all five are the top vote getters, they will not be seated. The three top vote getters will be seated and the two top vote getting Republicans would then be seated because of the minority representation requirement of our Charter. We didn't have that minority breadth. It could be four and one based on
And and what I'm saying is if you feel that it's, it's, it's appropriate to give a party the more opportunity to put more people up for a position and the selectman, eliminate the total. You can put up 10 people if it would fit on the ballot and statutorily, we could get away with it. Go ahead.
Or just leave it without no more, the political, leave that sentence out so that the political party just can nominate the number that elections allow them.
Carol, when you, when people vote, they can make three selections, correct? Is that right?
No.
Maybe the first select, first selectman, I'm sorry?
We are restricting that by saying that each party can nominate no more than three. So we are restricting that in our Charter to the three. And just for example, Board of Finance, each party at our major municipal election can nominate four members or candidates. So the electors can vote for four people. So if you're eliminating the number restriction in our Charter as to the number that they can nominate, the number that the political party can nominate is the number that the elector can vote.
Got it. So you're, you're suggesting that, let's say we make it four, we increase it. I walk in that ballot box. I could put the four across on the Republican or four across on the Democrat. But really, the top five vote getters across all of them are going to be it. And
No.
But no, but no, I'm sorry. The, the, there can only be three from one party with a majority and two from, could be any other party. Okay, so you're suggesting four, but I guess I still, I
See, I, I like Jeff's suggestion that we just eliminate that sentence and we don't restrict
And then how many, and then how many do you have people for when they walk in?
They can vote for the same number that the political party can nominate.
So what if one party puts up four and one party puts up three, what would you do?
They did an under endorsement because if, if when I get the list and I send it out to the town committee chair, they have to send me the number of candidates that they're endorsing. If there are five spaces open and they do not nominate five candidates, that's an under endorsement on their part. There's nothing that we can do about that. But they have the option to nominate five candidates and give the voters of handover those 10 people
Okay.
who are left.
But, but what you're suggesting, Carol, is, is is changing the number because what Jody asked before was how many, how many candidates can you vote for at an election? And currently, you get to put one vote on the first selectman line. So those two candidates, there's one, one to one. And then when you get down to the other candidates that are running just for the select board currently, you can only vote for two. So it's three. Okay.
Yeah.
Right.
So, so that's the current situation. What Cur, what Carol is saying is she'd say, you vote for five and you put up whatever candidate you want. But that's what, I think that's what you're trying to say here. Okay. You're trying
That is what I'm saying because then it would be state law as to how many we'd be able to vote rather than restrict not only how many we could vote for, but also the number that a political party
So what, so what you're asking, what you're asking is for every resident to vote for all of the members of the board that they want to have elected, all of them.
Right, because if we are eliminating the Office of First Select actually, it sounds like everyone is in favor of doing that.
No, we've never voted on that. I'm just
No, no, but I'm saying it, it sounds like that's the idea that, that's the idea that's out there is what I'm saying. Okay? So if we were keeping the Office of First Select and then one would run against the other and whoever was not elected just would be out of the race. And then if we were keeping it that way, and then I'm just suggesting to allow the, to remove that line and just allow political parties to put up four candidates for Board of Select. One for first selectman, four for Board of Select. So then there's more options out there for the vote. If we decide to eliminate the Office of First Selectman and just do Board of Selectmen, Select Board, whatever we're going to call them, um, group, then give the electors the right oh, it, our political parties to put up their five people and our electors to vote for the five and our electors to vote for the five that they want.
But you're still having a five-person board with the majority of one party only being three, is that, is that in the, in your scenario?
I, I'm nuts, I haven't even gone over there as far as the minority rep, because again, our charter increases minority rep requirement on our Board of Selectmen and our local Board of Education. I'm not suggesting anything about that at this point, if the Charter Review Commission wants to look at that.
So assume, assume those, I guess I'm just trying to play your scenario. So you say, assume those are still in play with, a political party can put up five, the voter can pick five, and the minority representation still holds, okay?
Right, because that's happened on other boards, Jody, because if the makeup of a board is of a five-member board, um, there's two candidates that are up within our upcoming 2025 election, okay? So let's say that each party puts up two candidates. But right now, the makeup of that board is three Republicans. And let's say that the two Republicans in the 2025 election are the top vote getters. One of those will not be seated due to the minority representation requirement. So the lowest vote getting Republican will not be seated. The top vote getting Democrat will be because minority rep comes into play, and this has happened in the past, where someone who is, receives the most votes at the election is not seated because minority rep.
And again, just working through the possibilities, if it's three and three for five positions, then basically just the one person who gets the least amount of votes doesn't get elected. And you're always gonna have three of one party and two of the other.
Right.
Unless there's a third-party candidate, potentially.
Right, right.
There's three of one, maximum of one party.
But then if they are a petitioning candidate and they are a registered Republican, they are a Republican minority rep. If they're unaffiliated or a minor party, that's when there's a difference.
Well, one of the ongoing points of discussion is that as it stands now, we have trouble finding enough people for there to be a competitive election. So I don't know that increasing the number of allowed candidates for each party really changes anything.
Can I, can I just tell you this? I, when people have been coming into my office since we started this new charter revision, because that's what I've been hearing a lot, is that we can't get people in this. We put out on our Facebook page, we sent a text, we sent people who sign up for the different emergencies, we let them know about this, we had fourteen people sign up for this board commission. We had a number of people signing up wanting to be on the field commission. The, the boards and commissions that we put that information out there to people, and we tell them how to go about getting their name on the list to be on there, they come forward. I have been just asking people as they come into my office since we started this, I asked them if they mind my asking them a question and maybe putting them on the spot. And I asked, how would you go about if you wanted to be on the Board of Education or the Board of Finance? Or you want to be the town clerk, how would you go about doing that? And I have not had one person who knew how to do that. And, and it's, it's just, people don't understand, there's a process, there's a timeframe, you have to talk to your respective town committee, if you're unaffiliated, go to both town committees and ask them for the endorsement. But people honestly don't know. So if we were to put an effort in there with, in our town resources to get this information, we get everything out to the people, why can't we do that? Send that out, hey, there's a municipal election coming up in 2025. We're gonna be filling three seats on our Board of Finance, we're gonna be filling two seats on our local, uh, I'm sorry, three seats on our local Board of Education. We're gonna be filling two seats on our fire commission, two on planning and zoning, you know, get that information out. If you would like to be on the ballot, these are the ways that you do it. Democratic Town Committee is having their caucus on this day, Republican Town Committee on this day. Call the respective town chair and ask where it's at, you know, if you need any information, and go out there. I, I do think we'd have more people interested if they understood the process and the deadlines.
Thank you, that's all very useful, very relevant stuff. Um, can we circle around to the, the subject at hand here and try to come to some sort of conclusion on it? Um, three, four? Leave it at three?
No. I think Carol's, I, I think Carol's point is valid, just eliminate the number. Any party can put up what they want. I am telling you, I mean, Carol, just from my standpoint, the Republicans and the Democrats are gonna put up what will make the most sense mathematically for them to get people positioned on the boards. But I agree with you. Now, the, the bigger question is, is eliminate the number of candidates, right? Eliminate the number of candidates, how many people can you vote for is a bigger question, Carol?
Yeah, that dictates how many, how many each party will put up.
Check on that, um. Additionally, it is the number of seats that are available are the number that the party can nominate and that the elector can vote for.
Okay, so, so let's, let's just say, we, we, let's sit there and say we kept what we're currently doing, that means, that would mean that the first selectman candidates would run against each other, and there would only be one vote for that seat. And then the current process would mean that for the rest of the select board, you'd have four votes, not two that you currently have.
Right.
Right? Okay. I, I'm just telling you, if, if that's how it would go, I would support that. So if you had five, let's sit there and say for some reason, and somehow the elimination of the first selectman occurred, you would then have five votes for the select board. And the parties could put up whatever number of candidates they wanted, but we would still have a three-to-two split, the majority party could only have three members.
Right, if the charter stays like that with the minority rep, but, um, they, the party could still only put up, you know, their, the maximum number allowed, but if they under endorse.
And so it would be the three highest vote getters from one, you'd, you'd look at the five highest vote, well, actually, I don't know how you'd do it.
You just rank it, you rank it one through five, and if four of the members are from one party, you take the sixth person and bring them in. It happened in two thousand and fourteen. Okay, so that was a really odd election because we had two petitioning people, we had a lot of people running, so.
Okay, well, I reshared, I just struck the whole thing. If, you know.
I mean, striking the number of potential candidates they can put up doesn't do anything to the parties. It gives, it gives potentially us options to get more candidates, but in my head, I'm thinking the individual parties are only gonna put up what mathematically makes sense to them, which is what Jody said in his original piece. But if you strike it, it allows them, it allows Carol and the town to go forward and say, hey, run, and, uh, you know, get on the ballot, which I'm all for.
I, and I'm not opposed to it either, striking it, I think the, so then the, then the question is, you were asking them to pick five. And so it adds an interesting dynamic, I mean, I guess if you're a political party, you're probably gonna wanna have, well, you could want, you could say, I want five on the ballot because I want everyone in my party to be able to not cross-vote, or you could say, I only want three because I want my party to um, you know, concentrate the vote. There's a level of gamesmanship, there's a level of strategy that I think comes into play that doesn't, doesn't happen today, and if that's, if that's our intent.
You could tell your, your, your party, vote for the three strongest Democrats and the two weakest Republicans.
Or don't, or only vote for three.
You know, or, you know, it's, there's a lot of different strategies that could, that could come into play.
And if that is the strategy of a party, they can under endorse and only put up their three candidates. But you don't know who's gonna be most popular we can vote, we might think someone's a really strong candidate. They don't make it, so, you know, it's, it's interesting how things turn out, that's all I'm saying.
I mean, the, the, listen, just for me, if the, if the first selectman race was, and let's, I'm just sitting there with what we're currently dealing with, so I won't speak to what you're dealing with right now, Bob, I'm trying to go through. If the first selectman race was winner-take-all, you would see different things happen in our town. If you just make the first selectman race winner-take-all, then it becomes very different because that first person normally gets thrown back into the pool, and normally the elections are close enough that that person has a greater mathematical chance of getting a seat than someone running for the straight election.
What do you mean winner-take-all?
Uh, if the first selectman race is, is, you know, the winner is the first selectman and the loser is not on the Board of Selectmen and has no chance to get thrown back into the pool, then it really does, it would clean up a lot of what has happened in the past within our town. I mean, I'm just saying, that's, that's the truth, you know, so you now, as a, now as a, as a party, you have to determine if you're putting your best candidate up running for first selectman when they may lose, and then they're out, because right now, like, uh, uh, it happened in this cycle, Anne Kremay and the Democrats got, voted very heavily for Anne Kremay, and she got, she got a lot of votes, and, um, you know, Adrian and I ran for first selectman, and Adrian lost by more votes, and he was not, you know, he did not continue on the Board of Selectmen.
He didn't get enough votes.
He didn't get enough votes. Now, if Adrian had, had been in the pool for the selectman, he, he may have gotten enough votes. So to me, I don't mind Carol's proposal of eliminating the number that they can put up. I tell Carol, I would go to Carol, and I would go, if I was advising the Republicans or the Democrats, I would tell them, you really gotta do the math to understand how many people you can get, and who you want to get on, and what you want to do. So, but if you eliminate the pool opportunity for the first selectman candidate, you, you would clean up a lot of problems within the town. But.
But you're, so I think, you know, Adrian, I think, had suggested that we, last time, we, we, we settled that first. Whether, are we, are we moving to the sort of first selectman being that, you know, it, uh, appointed from the Board of Selectmen.
I, I have told, I have told the whole group, I'm not in favor of this, and there's a reason I'm not in favor of it, because we're not a seven-member board. As a five-member board, it's much more difficult, and I can give you a, just a plain example. The Board of Education is a seven-member board, and they elected a, a new chairperson. There's, there's the ability to, to, to make decisions on a seven-member board that are different from, from a three-member board. And it's just my opinion, I would, I do not want to sit there and see this on the Board of Selectmen with a five-member, I was the one who, who brought it up because I would have done this at a town council with a seven-member board because it makes sense, and you have off-elections, you have, you have a, a four and a three, and so there's always new people coming in, there's new, potentially new people going out. It works on that type of board. I really don't think it's the right thing to do on a five-member board when all five are running at the same time. It's just my opinion. Um, you guys can put it up, and as I've been saying, it's got to get to the Board of Selectmen, and it's got to get voted on by the Board of Selectmen. And I'm gonna vote no there, too.
I see both, both sides to it, because we have a lot of five-member boards that vote for their chairman or fire commission, um, even appointed boards, like the library, recreation.
And none of them, and none of them are the, the lead organization within the town and have the, the the issues in front of them that the town does, and there's a, you know, Carol, for Recreation Commission, when we, when we appointed, you know, yes, you appoint your chairperson, and, and I have no problem with those because you're not electing, you're not potentially electing the chairperson for that committee. In the Board of Selectmen, we're currently electing the chairperson for that committee. So, I, I, I mean, that's just my opinion.
Jeff, I don't understand why five versus seven, why, help, I'm sorry, I, I missed your, your point. You're saying if it was a seven-person board of, even if it wasn't a combined, my sense is you think the number seven is important versus a five-person.
Well, on the seven-member boards that we currently have in town, we have off-elections. So four members are coming in in one cycle, two years, and then three the next two-year cycle. And so electing or appointing that chairperson makes sense to me, but also, Jody, there's, there's an extra two people. If there's five people on a board to, to gather the three necessary votes um, are a lot easier than to gather that extra vote that you need on a seven-person, I'm just saying, that's just my opinion, how I sit there and look at it. And what will end up happening every time is that the, the party, uh, at, at least in the Board of Selectmen, the party with, um, primarily the party that wins, the three, the three members will pick one of their members for the board, they may not pick the best person for the board, they're gonna pick the best out of their three. And that's how it currently works, so. I recommended it, I, I would recommend it for a seven-member board, if you made the Board of Selectmen seven members, and you made four members run one period and three members run another period, I would do it. Um, but that's why I was trying to go to the town council, because you could shrink the total number that we're currently trying to, to get to run, uh, of twelve down to seven. So you're, you're merging five seats, you're taking five people, qualified people, and you're hoping to get uh, an election of, of qualified people, and the biggest thing in our town is just having smart, common sense people in these positions, and, um, I'm just, I'm against it, Jody, so you may, you may sit there and think a five-member group can do it easily, but there's so much politics in everything we do, even in this, even in a small board and the way that we're running currently, there's still politics.
Oh, I've, I've felt it personally, so I know what you're describing.
So Jeff.
I think a seven-person, like, what I wanted to have, would have happened. So I, I do know what you mean.
So Jeff, town council notwithstanding, would you be in favor of a seven-person Board of Selectmen staggered terms with, uh, with a, an, an, you know, chosen internally first selectman?
No, because, um, and the reason I wouldn't is, one, it's, it, it, you're just adding more layers of people, and I know what Carol's saying, people would run, and, um, it, it's just not what I've seen occur out there.
And on the same note with the first selectman in giving the voter, you know, three hundred, four hundred people the option to vote they want as first selectmen versus a board, now, I don't know that I honestly think that people are just gonna say, oh gee, I'm a Republican, I'm gonna vote for the Republican because there's three of us on the board, or vice versa, I'm a Democrat, I'm gonna vote for the Democrat because there's three of us on the board. I don't think we've seen that on any of our boards, I know P and Z, when they're sitting there, I, I think that people don't always vote party lines like that. party lines like that. So, and so I do think that our.
Let's go back to two thousand and fourteen and the situation that we're in before I ran. And you know, and I know, I spent four years on that board and I got zero accomplished because of the group of people I had on that board. So, I, I, I'm telling you, it's politics. Carol, you, you know it, you would live it, you've dealt with it. And it's, it's not going to change. And, and I, the only way to do it is to sit there and, and in my head, have a bigger board and change the type of government we have because then you'll get really good candidates. I, I believe, I would believe you would get really good candidates as best you possibly can because you'd take the best people running on the Board of Finance and the best people running on the Board of Selectmen and you'd get more people to come in because it would just be a, an open race. Um, so.
Okay, we've, we've kind of talked this one to death and it's all great stuff. Um, I'm going to take the stuff that I've done in the marked up charter here, condense it down to something that I can send to Jody and that'll get circulated around so we can all look at it concisely. Uh, again, like the other things, I'm going to stop sharing here if that's okay.
Sending it to me, send it to everybody, Bob.
Yeah, okay.
Um, and then I know Carol, you have that individual, I'm sorry, I forget that, the town clerk person, not town clerk, um, I'm sorry.
For the petition, the petition for the ordinances, I'll send that out and mine. I'll send my copy. I.
Right. Oh, there's an individual that's can help us put packet together. I forgot that person's name, in-town office Eric's support person, right?
Okay, can do that, but what I can do as an attachment is just, I know what you're saying about the packet, but I can send this over to you when our meeting is done. Just where I, the changes that I read off because I highlighted what should be taken out. And in red is what would. So I can send that over to you and then ask Kate to create a packet for our next meeting. Is that what you're asking me to do?
Yeah, yeah, so like Jeff, Jeff has a, a host sent something out and he's going to add some more to it. You're, you're, you know, um, you know, Bob has a potential here with the first selectman changes and that's something for us all to review. So I, you know, there should be some level of a how to, you know, these aren't, none of these, like, I think we put it in the minutes when we all, we all approved them, right? So I don't think these, these would go in the minutes, but they should, unless you just want to keep emailing, but I thought Adrian had suggested we, we create some sort of packet for review.
Yeah, an attachment would be, would be appropriate, like it's done with a lot of other, uh, commissions and boards.
Right, okay.
Okay, and Carol, I want to talk with you tomorrow about, um, just some of the mechanics of how these documents are, are put together. I, I think I have a, a way to do it that might make it a little bit, a little bit higher quality, a bit better. Yeah. So, some of the stuff you can do within Word and, and PDFs, okay?
Okay, thank you.
I think we have covered all of the things that we intended to cover this week. The things that we talked about last week and deferred. It's unfortunate that Adrian isn't with us because he had a couple of, uh, important items, you know, interesting and important, but we'll just pray for his recovery. And, um, at this point, it looks like we move on to the second public speak. And we have Leanne Hutchinson. Leanne, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Yes, thank you. Um, I was on earlier. I called in at a different phone number and so that was me. I could hear you. And I thought I unmuted myself, but I don't think you could hear me identify myself at the time. And then I've called in again on a different phone number. Um, so there's a couple of things that I may have missed the beginning of some of your discussion, but I.
Can you speak a little louder, Leanne?
Oh, do you want me to start over or just, is that better?
That's good. Okay, you had a couple of items you wanted to bring up.
Yes, um, mainly, I just wanted to mention something because it would not be part of what this committee is going to discuss this time around. But just for future reference, um, if there is another Charter Review Committee, whenever that may be, and I don't know how many more meetings you, you all are going to have, um, it's, I participated in the process back when we first instituted the charter in town. And I've never thought that it was a good idea to have these four-year terms. I'm just giving this as a topic, as I said, possibly for the future. Um, I don't think it's really appropriate to have four-year terms when our state representative, our state senator and our congressperson, um, currently Joe Courtney all serve for only two years. And I think it's just too lengthy and it's almost a bit presumptuous, if you see what I mean, to have anybody in power for that long. And the first argument that usually comes up is, well, commission members, board members like to finish what they started, which makes sense. But that's true of any office holder. So, um, just, you know, it's always been my opinion that this is probably not the best way to do things, to have terms that are twice as long as elected officials. You know, it, it, higher elected officials, local and, um, regional, such as I just mentioned. That's all. Thank you.
Leanne, can I, 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 I know public speak isn't supposed to be back and forth, but I, I'd just like to add something, uh, to, to what you just said. Just, just you and I have a good dialogue. You and I both work together on planning and zoning. That comes to mind as does the Board of Finance, as does the, the Board of Education. These are all boards with kind of a steep learning curve and a lot of material to learn in order to become good at, uh, and effective in that position. So, uh, you know, I don't know that two years is enough. Just my two cents worth.
Well, I, I, I know there is a learning curve and, and in a way that's a good thing because it's almost like a, you know, a, a job where with many people's jobs, there are things that you do every day that you learn to do right away. And then there are things that come up that are just, you know, one-time things or things of varying importance. Um, but again, I just refer to, um, the, the idea that we currently have two-year terms for state representative, state senator and our congressperson who cover, you know, respectively, a lot more constituents than we do in a town like this. So maybe, you know, with three-year terms would be advisable or, you know, it's come up in a different context about staggering terms. Um, and we don't have that right now for, at least for the Board of Selectmen. So, again, that's just a thought and that's why I feel that this might not be the best way to go. Maybe three years would be better down the line at some point.
Certainly food for thought. Thank you for that input. Attorney Loudon.
Yes, thank you. Um, real quickly, just based on what you just discussed, I absolutely agree that given the very steep learning curve, two years is insufficient. Um, and I think we would need to stick with four years just to stay on the election cycle. So I don't know that adding a whole other election at a third year would be a good idea. And the only other, um, input I have for right now is, I've been giving it a lot of thought about having a seven-person Board of Selectmen. Um, based on what, you know, Jeff was offering for the Town Council, I understand what happened there. Um, but I have personally experienced the benefit of staggered terms on a seven-person board for the last nine years. And I think given the importance of our Board of Selectmen, um, that would be a really good idea to have people, um, every two years who have experience and can educate the people who are coming on as to, uh, what a budget looks like. How, how a budget is formulated, what our ordinance is, just everything that the Board of Selectmen, and I, I don't mean to, to, uh, down, downplay it or whatnot, but everything that they have to deal with, I think it would be a great idea to have a seven-person board. Um, and I agree with Carol that we could get people to run. Um, I just, I've seen it in the last two committees that we asked for people to, um, to apply for. And I agree with Carol that if we tell people better how to do it, we might actually get a lot more people um, to run for things. And we're trying to do that on the DTC. Thanks a lot for all your work.
Thank you, Shannon. Any, uh, public speak from the members of the commission? Any independent things? Going once. Jeff, you look like you wanted to say something.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I second that. Okay, in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Oh, I'm not opposed.
Thank you, one and all.
All right, see you guys.